All right, we should be good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I'd like to welcome everyone to the school committee meeting for our Tuesday, May 28, 2024. If we could all please stand up for the session.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Kind of a busy house here tonight, thank you. This school committee meeting will be in-person, school committee members and the public. A remote option will remain available for committee members unable to attend in person. Join through a PC map, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. Please click the site that's on the website, which is falmouth-k12-na-us.zoom.us/j/87363447403 to join. Thanks, appreciate it. If there's anyone here making a recording, could you please let me know? Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Noel. And Mike, could you please read the mission and vision?
FPS mission: Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. FPS vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
So I'm going to go a little bit out of order because our student advisory is having difficulty logging on. So that being said, I'd love to welcome the new members. Welcome Katrina. And welcome. Is she on, Ryan?
I don't see her currently. I'm sending the invite directly.
Okay. Well, then we'll just move on to public comment. We'll continue to go out of order. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length due to open meeting law. The committee cannot act on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12-na.us. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. Seeing none. All right. How long are we doing with our student advisor? We've got dots. Thank you, Noel. Is everyone hot? I can't find it, okay. All right. How about we go on to the presentation of the equity audit by M A E C?
So I'd like to introduce Jenny Petillo from MAC. She has been with us from the very beginning. Many of you will recognize her. She first joined us via Zoom many, many months ago. And she has been alongside this journey with us this year. So welcome Jenny.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here. The last time that I saw you, Henry, was reminding me was almost two years ago now when I was recording from a Starbucks in Maryland. And then I was told I needed to leave, so I finished the call in early. But I'm very happy to be here with you all this evening and really excited to tell you about the wonderful work that your district has been engaging in with us. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get into it.
Jenny, I'd like to say that we didn't tell you to leave. The store closed.
Oh, yes. Clarify. It was Starbucks that told me I needed to leave because they were closing and did not want to continue spending time with me.
Thank you, thank you.
So as Dr. Orson said, I'm with the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium, M A E C. We are an education equity nonprofit based in the Bethesda area of Maryland, but we work across the country and particularly up and down the East Coast. Really, our mission is to really promote excellence and equity to achieve social justice. We have lots of areas of work and the work that we've been engaging with Falmouth specifically is funded through a grant from the Department of Education. It's our Equity Assistance Center grant. This is a project of M A E C called the Center for Education Equity, which allows us to engage and work with state education agencies, local education agencies, and individual schools funded by the Department of Education to support anything and everything related to operationalizing equity. And so we're very excited that through our grant, we've been able to partner with you all. Our goals for this evening, this is going to be a very brief overview, and I've been thinking about this as part one of a very intentional rollout that we're doing with the community. While a lot of this is very familiar to our principals that we've been engaging within this work, we've also gotten to give some initial information to school-based equity teams, and we're really excited that this has been a true partnership. And so for this evening, our goal really is to give you a very quick overview of what the needs assessment process engaged in, a very brief summary of the findings from the needs assessment, and to also give you an overview of where we go from here, because this is truly a beginning. It's not an end. There's lots of great work ahead of us. And so you also have received a handout that has a more thorough summary. So what you're going to look at this evening is just a snapshot of things, and you will also have access to the full report in a moment. So again, what we're presenting today is just a brief summary, and then you'll have the opportunity to dig deeper later on.
If we can pause, I did not receive it yet. I thought we were receiving it at the end.
Oh, we don't have to have it right now. It's okay. They don't have to have it now.
No, because you're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, whatever works for you all.
I can pass it out, but we should be doing it at the end so that we're focused here. But it's okay, this is the summary.
We'll be focused, that'll be the promise. And what you'll see in the handout is also a QR code and a link to the full report that will also be in the slides. So you'll have multiple opportunities to get the full information. Because again, I'm only giving a brief overview this evening. Before we jump into talking about the findings from all the work that we've done together, we have a couple of norms at M A E C that we like to remind folks when it comes to looking at anything related to data. The first is to see the vast humanity behind each data point. We're not just talking about numbers and percentages here. We're talking about staff, students, leaders, family members, community members. And so we really want to remember that when we're talking about any sort of data, they really represent the true and lived experiences of real people. We also want to focus on systems, not individuals. And what that means is we want to focus on what we as a district, and I include myself in there because I'm a partner with you all in this, can do to create a system that supports all students, staff, and families instead of isolating problems within an individual. It's not this teacher, this student did X, Y, Z, or couldn't do X, Y, Z. It's what can we as a system do to create a supportive learning environment for all? We also want to acknowledge the bright spots, and you'll see that in the way we laid this out, it acknowledges bright spots first. Oftentimes, it's more important to look at those to think about where are the places that we can grow from what we're already doing, more so than where are we not doing things? And let me tell you, there's a lot that's happening in Falmouth to build off of, lots of bright spots, and it's really great to see. We also, another norm we have is to focus on improvement. That means progress, gradual growth over punitive accountability measures. We want to make sure that we're celebrating the wins that we have along the way and acknowledging all of the effort that goes into that. And then finally, and this is hard because in education, we're all very much wanting to go to the next step in solving a problem, is to think about where are we making long-term commitments for, again, that process of growth over short-term implications? We don't want Band-Aid solutions or solutions that address symptoms of our problem. We want to dig deep into root causes so that we're really solving problems so they don't reappear again later on. So with that, this is our continuous improvement for equity model that we have at M A E C. And really, this is a continuous improvement model you can use for anything, not just for equity. But it involves, first, it's understanding the system, your district, your school, to understand what's really going on, looking at data deeply, talking to people, creating a collaborative team, which in this case has been comprised of a lot of different stakeholder groups here in your district. And where we're now moving with Falmouth is in this place where we're determining a name and designing a theory of improvement or an action plan that's really grounded in strong data and in strong testimonial of experiences from folks. Then you all will move into testing things out, implementing action plan, monitoring, and hopefully convening a network of other districts, other folks, that you can share the great work that you're doing and have even more support from other folks across the cake and also in general across your state and the country that you can leverage for partnership and also to teach them some things, because there's a lot of really great stuff happening here. When we talk about equity, it's grounded in very concrete things. A lot of times, folks think of, well, but we still need to do teaching and learning. Equity is central to teaching and learning. It's not an add-on. It's not separate from the true mission of schools, which is teaching and learning. And so we like to establish a criteria for an equitable school because it tells us what equity looks like, sounds like, feels like. So having an equity-centered mission, making sure that you have a visual and physical environment that's inclusive for different groups of folks with different needs, making sure that there's collaboration with various identity groups. And in this case, identity groups means different races, religions, national origins, languages, gender and sexuality, et cetera. Partnership with families and school communities, ongoing embedded systematic professional learning opportunities. We can't expect folks in classrooms to know what to do if we haven't trained them and worked with them to develop the skills that they need to be effective practitioners of equity in their classrooms. And finally, an equitable school has to be one that promotes students' social, emotional, and mental health whole-being, both for students and families. It's not just, we haven't done our jobs at all that kids learn are their standards. We need to make sure that they're well-rounded people and that we care to be doing that way as well. So this is what we've grounded the work in Falmouth with in building schools that meet these criteria. A very brief overview, I know Henry has filled you in along the way, but we did three data collections with Falmouth over the last almost two years now. There were consensus teams at every school that conducted an equity audit, and that is a tool developed by M A E C. All of this was done in collaboration with principals, the school-based equity teams, with central office staff, where folks had an opportunity to determine what questions would be used, what domain, so that it's all grounded in your expertise in your district. We also have conducted climate surveys at the level of students, staff, and families. Students, we had a pretty high completion rate across all of Falmouth schools. For staff, we had about 70% completion rate, and for families, we had about 10%, which is pretty on par with what we see with families across other similar-sized districts across the country. And so because of that, because the percentage of staff and families was smaller than 100%, we've decided not to make this aggregated data available because we want to avoid identifying individual families or staff members. We're working on how to make student data more disaggregated available because the completion rate is so high, it would make it challenging to identify any one student. So we did want to make sure that you're aware of that. The findings that I'm going to be presenting are district-wide, not individual schools. So just note that we're going to be talking about district-wide trends in just a moment. We also did a review of existing district disciplinary data that was shared with us. And so what we've used were the State Department of Education's benchmarks for disciplinary data to determine if any one group of students is being over-disciplined over another. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. So this is one of the places where you have access to the full report, which is presented sort of like a website. It's called the Story Map. We thought that this allowed folks to have more interaction with the data and with the findings instead of handing you like a hundred-page report. We want to make sure that what came out of all of this work is usable, understandable for anyone. And so you have the QR code. We're also going to make this available to the wider community at the community forum as well, so they'll have access to it along with handouts like the one you received. And so across the top, we'll see there are the different categories, and then as you scroll down, you'll also be able to see data points like what came out of the consensus teams, the surveys, and it's broken up into bright spots and areas for improvement. Now, for bright spots, the equity audit tool is rated on a scale of four. There are four levels: latent, pervigent, established, and advanced. Anything that was established or advanced is above average, and so that became a bright spot. And on the climate surveys, it goes all the way from zero, which is the least positive or no response, all the way to a six, which is most positive. And so any responses or any items that had an average of five to 5.5, we rate it as a bright spot because they're well above average in terms of more positive feelings. And then anything that was below an average of four would primarily were lower, less positive responses, so that became an area for improvement. Same thing with the equity audit tool. If majority of schools responded to a latent emergent, that would give you lower average. That would be an area for improvement. So there were lots of things that didn't make it onto this report because they were swimming somewhere in the middle, and we wanted to give you places to prioritize, again, bright spots to build off of, and areas for improvement to address. Because this work is hard, it's involved, and so we want to make sure that we're intentional about staging the work around those big areas of continuing improvement as well as places where we can build on great things that are already happening. What I'm about to share with you right now are sample bright spots. The handout that you have has a summary of all the bright spots and all the areas for improvement. What I'm showing you right now is just a quick sample so you get a sense of what we found through these different data collections. As you're looking through, whether it's the sheet that you have in front of you or what I'm showing you on the slide deck, there are some questions that I want to offer you for reflection. We won't have time to discuss them here, but they're things that are good for you to think about as we move forward. The first, is anything that you're seeing here or that I'm presenting, whether it's a bright spot or an area for improvement, surprising to you? Is there anything that resonates with your particular experience? Are there any questions that the bright spots or areas for improvement raise for you? And these are just good things to think about as you dig in. So the first domain that came up, and what we did is called triangulation, where we looked at what are common themes that came across those three data collections. From there, we compiled those and looked for the bright spots and the areas for improvement for each based on the three data collections. So the first domain that came across as a common theme was academic environment. And what that means is the extent to which the district provides a positive and accessible learning experience for students and families. One of the big bright spots, and again, this is just a sample, there were lots more, is that families reported on the climate survey as being highly satisfied by the academic experience provided by the district. There were several items on the climate survey that families answered that correspond to that idea that they really are very satisfied with their experience. An area for improvement that came out of this that came out of the equity audit tool and the consensus teams is that schools reported that they need to be more proactive at gathering feedback from students and families or parents on educational programs and preparing students to succeed in a diverse environment. And so that was based on lower ratings for that item by the consensus teams at each school. The second domain that came across as a common theme across the different data collections was inclusive representation, which means to what extent does the district promote diverse representation that's free from negative stereotypes? And from the equity audit tool, what was reported as, again, as established or advanced for all schools was that the school events and materials featured in libraries and media really center the diverse experiences and identities of the Falmouth community, which is really exciting. An area for improvement that came out of this domain was that the schools could, need to be more intentional at integrating culturally responsive teaching practices into their instructional practice. And that coincided with what district personnel shared with us is actually already happening within the curriculum and instruction department here at the district, which is really great. It's nice when you see the work that's happening aligning with what's coming out of the data because it means that we're on the right track. Another big domain that came out of the data collections was around family engagement. And really, what this applies to is to what extent the district promotes partnership between schools and families to promote student learning. So not just in the low-level involvement, but really, how are we partnering with families and the community to promote learning? A bright spot that came out of that was that families feel really comfortable discussing their child's progress with school staff and behavior as well, so academics and behavior, which is really great. An area for improvement was, and we saw something similar to this earlier, was that schools lack formal opportunities to engage families in the broader community to inform school policies. Now, we do understand that some policies are not something that we can, you know, have up for debate because they're coming from the state or from other bodies, but where there are opportunities, schools reported wanting to have more opportunities to engage the community around policy development and implementation. Domain four, work environment and leadership, is really about employee satisfaction and support and to what degree they foster employees supporting effective decision-making. This was one of the strongest domains for the district, which was really great. This involves climate surveys of non-instructional staff, school leaders, and teachers. Teachers really reported feeling like they were highly trusted by both parents and guardians and school administration to teach how they prefer. Non-instructional staff also had really high satisfaction rates with working conditions at their school. It's really great to see when staff feels supported by their district, so a huge kudos to you all for that, as well, and our school administrators, who were a big part of that. An area for improvement was teachers feeling like professional learning opportunities could be more useful. And I know that there's ongoing work related to that and gathering input, which again, is great that you're aware of this and the findings on our end corresponds to work that you're all bringing up. And our last domain, safety and discipline, this was also a fairly strong domain for the district. And really, it's about to what degree does Falmouth Public Schools really maintain an environment where students can learn in peace and disciplinary policies are fairly applied? It's really exciting when we can engage students and hear from them. And in the climate surveys, fourth through sixth grade students and seventh and twelfth grade students both really reported strongly that they do not feel that they're treated unfairly because of who they are. They feel that their identities do not negatively impact their experience, which is really exciting. They feel supported. Also, we found that there was no extreme disproportionality in the district, which means that no student group is being overly disciplined, suspended, expelled, more than any other student group, which is really great to see. There were some places where there is room for improvement, but based on the state benchmarks, you all are far below the state average when it comes to disproportionality, which is really great. An area for improvement coming out of this domain is that the referral process is being used differently. It's implemented inconsistently from one school to another based on different interpretations folks have for how to categorize behavioral infractions or intentions for what referrals track. And so what that leads to is some differences from campus to campus. And so a lot of the work we'll be doing there with school leaders is to do some visioning around how do you use the referral process? When do we use it? And how can it support the work that's happening in classrooms? So I just threw a lot at you. Again, these are just small snippets of what's in the summary sheet you have and what will be available in the full report story map that's available to you now. All of this information, like I said, is only the beginning. As you can see here, there will be a community letter going out along with summary that will go out at the end of this month. And then I really want to make a plug for especially anyone who's watching online to please join the community forum on June 10th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the high school campus. That presentation will go more in-depth and allow folks to really dig deeper into what came out of these findings and also begin to gather some input around potentially where we might want to focus as we move into district action planning throughout the summer. We'll begin initial school-level action planning as well as district action planning. And throughout this process, it's been really critical to engage with voices of families, students, our school leaders, our central office staff. And so in the fall, we want staff to have an opportunity to provide input on the initial action plans, to have something to respond to before it's finalized. We'll provide you all with an update at that point as well, and then communicate with the community around next steps and implementation. We're really, really excited about the work that's already come out of this initial partnership with Falmouth Public Schools, and we're even more excited about what comes next on this journey. And there's a lot of momentum behind this work thanks to the school principals that have really taken all of this and done so much amazing thinking and reflecting already. So big thank you and kudos to you all for that. But right now, we are in a really great place to continue building from here. And so with that, if you have any questions, my contact information is here, but thank you so much for your time and for allowing me to be here with you all this evening.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Jenny?
So I have one question about the forum. So I'm wondering, well, now let me move forward. What the form of the forum will be? Will people be able to come and will they just be listening to deeper pieces of information around each of these components? Or are they going to have an opportunity to weigh in? Is it going to be a dialogue, just so that people know what to start?
Well, we actually are doing some more planning on that actually tomorrow.
Oh, sorry.
But the intent is to provide a deeper overview, but more than anything, to hear reactions from folks and to also get some initial input on where we might want to prioritize when we go into action planning. So that when principals, district staff, and myself are working together over the summer, we have some community input already in the back of our minds, or forefront of our minds, I should say. And of course, there will be more opportunities for folks. So ideally, it's not just going to be me talking at you for 90 minutes. It should be an environment where there will be workshop and dialogue.
I was hoping so because, you know, this is going to make it out, and I'm sure people are going to be interested in the results, and they're going to go to the site, and they're going to read everything. And so I just want to make sure that they understand that there's a reason to come to the next piece because their input is going to be heard and valued, but it's not just delivery of information.
Yeah, I know. It's not intended to be like this where I just gave you a lot in a very short span of time. It really is, and that's why we are doing it for a longer period of time, so that folks have time to dig in and to dialogue around it and to let us know, you know, questions, reactions. There will also be a video that we're producing to help folks navigate the site and to understand how to read the different graphics and data visuals that are there, because we know that, again, that can be a little bit overwhelming as well because there's lots of graphs and other things. So we'll be providing a brief overview so that anyone who's coming to the site can navigate it and understand the findings and so that it's accessible. We really want this to be something that students can engage in, families can engage in, you all can engage in.
Terry?
Could you just maybe short define the domain, how that popped up? I'm not, a little fuzzy where the...
The different domains?
The domains came up.
Sure. So we did those three different data collections, and when we looked at what we got out of it, the survey had a bunch of questions, the consensus process, the consensus teams and equity audit tool had a bunch of questions. And then we looked at the disciplinary data, and we started looking at what are the things that they have in common? Well, all of them touched on academic environment in some way. All of them touched on family engagement in some way. And so that's what we thought. And so once we determined what are the common threads across these, then we thought, all right, what are the bright spots within each of these? What are the areas for improvement within each of these? So it was really informed by just what came out of all of these things so that we're not just giving you, here's what the climate survey said, here's this tool, here's this tool. Instead, it's here's a big theme that came across all three. Here's another theme that came across all three. Thank you.
Sure.
Margaret?
I'll answer this question too, but how in fact is the meeting going to be presented and advertised so that people do come and know? Are you presenting? Is this school presenting? What is the method? Because I think that that's really essential in terms of getting a really large group of people to attend.
Do you like that?
So, yeah, so we've already started. We have sent out the letter two weeks ago. It's been on social media. There's another letter out to all staff and families again this Friday that will advertise the week. We'll continue with the social media and then a reminder right before. So that's...
It'll be in person? I will be happily returning.
Yeah, sure. Jenny will run the meeting and facilitate the discussion and so forth.
And perhaps our friends at the other friends could help us out. No pressure.
I was just wondering if any communication is going to... I mean, I know letters are very good, but I know reading one stuff sometimes doesn't happen. So I was wondering if any information is going out from you to the community?
All of that comes from the community itself because you are the ones that have access to your listeners and everything. So we're sort of, we're taking, we're following your lead on this one. Yep, no problem.
Just quickly to that point, I was looking at Facebook today, and you had posted, not you, someone had posted on the school Facebook about her coming tonight. And that popped right up, and I noticed that much more than I would notice the letter, so thank you for that.
Yes. This concept, it'll be several times, you know, weekly between now and the session. So thank you for noticing that because that was a part of our public information protocol that Henry put together. So good, Henry, shout out, based on our guidance from Chris Horn earlier in the year.
If I could make one suggestion from Melissa and Henry, if you made an event, an event on Facebook, you'd get more people to share it and interested in posters to post.
So make an event.
That's like a calendar invitation.
So great.
Since Ryan is our social media person, then he stays here.
That's very sorry.
I have a question also. I know you had said that 10% of families responding to the survey is far from the course, but is there going to be another opportunity to gather more data? Is there going to be a future survey now that people might get more excited about it?
So at the moment, we're working with what we had, and a couple of things to note. So the surveys went out right around the holiday season, so that's something that might have impacted response rates. Another thing to note also is we did make the survey available in other languages, and the district did great work in also reaching out to families that might not have had computer access or technology access to do it. In terms of where we go from here, because we're about to go into action planning and implementation, the next time that there's an opportunity to survey or to do focus groups would be once we've implemented some things to get input from folks on, you know, how is the experience now for you? And so I, like, you know, I don't have a definitive answer on when that will happen, but ideally, because you're going to be monitoring your progress, there will be other opportunities to gather input as well.
I had a question. What part of my question was answered from Margaret's question, so thank you, Margaret. And then in the number five domain, are there the two student groups that were identified? Is that your category, or did we lose eighth grade in Falmouth? Because it went to seventh.
Four is fourth through sixth, and then seventh through 12.
Oh, I think I understood that, okay. I thought it was four and then seven.
And we only surveyed fourth through 12, so that was all the students.
It's just that they got two different versions of it that had adjustments for reading level and age appropriate. So we grouped, we don't typically administer the survey lower than fourth grade because of making sure that they have the ability to navigate the site on their own, although I'm pretty sure kindergarten has one type experience at this point. But that was... But that was the breakdown. And so four through six got one version of the survey and then our seventh through twelfth grade got the age-appropriate and literacy-appropriate level for them.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Any other questions, comments? Chris?
I'm not sure if it's possible. Are there going to be translators at this forum or...
That is a...
Yes, there will be, yes.
Great question.
Yes, there are, yes, there are, yes. We will make sure.
And then we'll also need to talk about translation for some of the deliverables and other things that are posted on the site as well. So for the surveys, we made sure that those are translated and the languages that it was transmitted to were based on a common knowledge of its main language groups and translation is owned by the district as well to make sure that it is aligned with any other translations that you send out. And so the same thing would happen here as well. Thank you, that's a great question.
One more. Will participants who are zooming in or joining online be able to join the discussion or are they kind of prohibited and can't observe it?
Please.
I don't believe we have, we'll have an online Zoom because we're, the discussion is going to be, we'll probably break up groups and stuff, so you can't really discuss it that way. So there won't be that, but we might be thinking about recording and I'll talk about whether that might be an option, but we're not sure right now, but...
We're still on the planning system.
We're still on the planning.
I was just going to follow up because I'm wondering with Mike's idea for the event, maybe then we could collect information about the languages that we would need for interpreter. I don't know if that's an option in the planning piece. Just throwing it out there.
I don't know if we want to...
Great. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Yes, like our books.
Thank you.
Traveled all the way from...
From New York, yeah. I drove in earlier today.
Excellent. Yeah. So...
Thank you.
We now have, we now have the student advisory. Thank you for waiting and going out of order. Student advisory, please unmute yourself. Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hi, I'm Molly. I'll be doing the student advisory tonight. First off, after prom and the prom itself was a success last week. Sophomores just took math MCAS and freshmen will be taking science MCAS next week. Spring sports have officially wrapped up. And graduation is this weekend on June 1st. And in about two weeks, finals are coming up. And I believe that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for our students? Does she not want to mention the final record from the sailing team? She absolutely wants to mention the final record from the sailing team.
We had a twelve to one and we won our league, so.
Very good. I think school and public academy joined sailing. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Any other questions? Thank you. See you later. Moving on to the presentation of progress of the twenty-three, twenty-four district and school goal. I'm going to turn that over to superintendent and the amazing principals of the district.
Thank you.
Here we go, Terry. You ready? We're spending the show.
And then everyone would say about three steps forward so we're closer to the... Great, okay. Now we're going to join the song.
Alright, thank you. As Melissa said, this is the amazing administrative team of Fallow Public Schools. So some of the information you will have heard before, but we are going to go over everything. Oh, okay, yes, we're going to be... Sorry, so we have the two new members that we are very happy to share some information that may be new to you. And so, and it doesn't hurt to repeat because we do like to talk about our Clipper and Clipper experience. So we're going to get started. This is an update for this school year. We will be back in the fall with our new goals. We are, because the equity audit just came through, we're going to spend partial time at the retreat, working on goals and making sure we're incorporating the information that we got. So we'll be back in September with our new goals for next year. But this year, as Mike read and the vision for us, so just real quickly, it's about providing an excellent education and empowering our students. And the vision being a good citizen locally and globally. And I've certainly cut that down, but Mike did read it earlier. So our Fallow Public School core values, as the administrative team and school committee worked several years ago, the first being empower students to find joy in their learning. How do we, how do we actually provide opportunities to give that experience of joy, right? So we give opportunities to make sure that each student can be able to achieve their personal best. We personalize the education. We make the learning relevant for students. We try to inspire our students to discover and to be actively engaged and to challenge our students in their learning. Those examples.
So amongst some of the examples, since we're talking about our partnership, the Woods Hole, the Greater Community, we think about the living classrooms, the ways in which we turn beaches and marshes and a great number of areas around town into our classrooms. So right now is a really great time to showcase examples. Grade seven was just conducting the day in the village. Some of them really got into their fish dissection. Some championed their peers. Kind of in completely different ways. Food justice and the work that they're doing and cultivating. And right now, they've got plans available for donation and just continuing to think about all the ways that students really get a chance to be inquisitive and test out everything.
Our second core value is to embrace each other's differences and cultivate community. We are fostering mutual respect and respecting multiple perspectives, partnering with our students, families, staff, and the community to deepen our student learning, fostering kindness, welcoming students of all abilities, and eliminating the achievement gaps in our schools.
So the course of the year, we had a few different opportunities to share our data dive with you, looking at, you know, in past performance. Recently, we looked at accelerated course enrollments. But also some of the other opportunities, you know, talking about tonight in the equity audit, the presentation coming up, the belonging series, and even about the family creative advisory. So just different ways that we're engaging.
And our third core value, the life of growth and wellness. So making sure that we create safe learning environment, challenging learners to go deeper into their learning, developing social, emotional, and physical health. And fostering the work, the students work independently and collaboratively, both. And recognizing success and failure are both parts of learning.
And in this particular one, we can quickly highlight the green ribbon recognition. This is one of the pillars, really, where we're attending to our students' ability to develop not only their individual wellness, but to participate within the community. So it can range from the things that they choose to do academically to the student clubs and organizations they belong to, to just what we model in our interactions and our work.
And Dr. Teller will talk more about our theory of action.
So when we think about the theory of action, anything in the if is what we, together as a school community, put in, right? And then the then should be the outcomes for our students. So if we keep it, if we keep our work focused on, and I like how Jenny was saying, right, teaching and learning at the core of our mission, if we keep ourselves focused on our students and what they will learn and what we want them to be able to gain from collaboration, not just the learning and experience, but the skills, right, that they learn. Then on the other side of that, they'll be more involved and conscious citizens who not only understand what's happening in their sphere, but how that then impacts others around them and be able to hopefully predict the results of their action before they do that.
Alright, so Dr. Teller, we'll be back toward the end. Just so as a reminder of who everyone is, we will be introducing the next person through and what school that they are from. So just for everyone new, as a reminder of who we are.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to put me aside. And that's Rose. Yeah, I'm worried about your videos. I'm going to turn it over to Rose and Sandy.
Okay, so, yeah, if you want...
So, so I'm Rose, Rose Marie.
I'm sorry.
We were talking about it. So I'm Rose Marie Malan Hall, school. And I'm here to talk about the Clipper experience. And as you said, we have our focus in our schools and we have worked to create our culture. Our Clipper culture is starting at age three and all the way to twenty-two. And we focus on the Clipper culture experience, ensuring personalized learning and commitment to excellence for every student. And we work on this together as a community. Our schools strive to be safe, welcoming learning environments grounded in a strong relationships among all students and adults, offering a wide range of customized quotes to help students overcome obstacles and achieve their full potential. These commitments are embodied in every student, every day. The following slide, we've worked hard vertically with this, this sharing all of our principles. And my following slide is about from two students having a circle in the office and how they're teaching each other.
Sorry, Rose, that's why I wasn't focused on the addition of all the addresses. It's more interesting to... Because I was worried about my audio.
The student on the right is new to the district. The student on the left is explaining to him about our school culture. Oh, I don't try to write left, that first. That's the topic, at least, the Clipper ship. I didn't say who they were. Oh. So this is one, Sandy, we're into this, but these are steps that we all work on vertically. We have, every classroom in the district has our Clipper letters and we reference them. So we're always constantly saying to the students, is that what a Clipper is? What are the Clipper expectations? They show up on our buses. We have the Clipper expectations for the buses. We have them in our hallway plans, our cafeteria plans. They will reference it to each other and say, is that being a Clipper? So it's part of our school culture and that's what we're working on. And here's an example. Students teaching students. Don't mind the messy office.
We, we friends, it's like, good, we don't say bad stuff to them and we don't say bad stuff to you. So another like rule culture that we have here is, if a friend gets hurt, you can help them get up or say, are you okay? And then you guys... And then you guys can go back play. Yeah, we have a lot of school cultures into it. If the teacher says that you cannot do that, you cannot do it. And we have rules at the gym, the computer class, the art class, the music class, and then the computers class.
So when you, when we reference that Clipper culture and the Clipper experience, it allows us then, there's no switching of the ropes, right, from building to building. The kids learn the code early on and then they're like, when they go and they hear that Clipper expectation to the next building or the next learning space, they know what's the expectation and there's no turns, right? There's not learning something new. How we've gotten here is Sandy, I think he's going to read, Sandy, I forgot about this. From the two tickets school, we'll go on about the benchmarks and how we get there and what we've done over here.
Okay.
Please, two steps forward.
Two steps forward?
Alright, so thank you, Rose. So we've been talking about the Clipper experience and this year, we have successfully met all of our benchmarks. So in the fall, we had implemented the iReady Math program for our students in grades K through eight. So in the last year, we had been vetting the program. We had done the field testing. And this is a very rigorous program, very high expectations for students. There are slides that are embedded that have the cultural connections. It's just part of the instructional program. There's a differentiation and, we can pause it for, oh, keep that on. I'll explain that after. And differentiation for students and then personalized learning. So that's kind of the Math program this year. The teachers have been part of professional development through the iReady publishers and we've had support from the Math coaches. I think just to talk a little bit about the Math program itself, I've really seen an improvement in students' ability to, their mathematical discourse. So they're, they're engaged. The part of the program is having slides that really focus on multiple answers to problems, multiple ways to look at things. And so students who may have been a little reserved before, thinking, I'm not sure if I have the right answer. I'm not going to raise my hand or offer a response, are now encouraged. And it's really fostered that growth mindset where they're taking, taking those chances and engaging with each other. And it's really helping improve their math skills. So this year, this highlight from our school, so these little tickets that students are holding, those are their Clipper tickets, so you can see the letters on there. So when the students earn their, their tickets, they, the teachers highlight something they've done in the classroom that's been creative or as a learner or partner. And then the students come to the office and I have my little frame there. And then the students get to have their picture taken and then I have put it in a photo album in the front lobby, front office so that the students can look at that. And then, of course, they take home their, their Clipper tickets as well. So this, this has been really fun for the, for the students as well. I think the old idea of having like a photo album. So when they all walk to lunch, they see the photo album there and they, you know, flip to the pages that they were in before, so. Alright, so I think now I'm going to turn it over to principal of the East Falmouth, Kelpie, and Mary Gans.
Was riding on the maroon memo. It's made in the sun, let's say. So just to overview the progress to date from pre-K through twelve, we have strived very hard in the district to welcome and engage every member of our school community with a focus on what it means to be a Clipper and our vision of a Clipper graduate. And we strive very hard to prepare students for a life after the Fallow Public Schools, which this Saturday, as Molly Keith mentioned, is the graduation. So if people are interested, please go or RSVP to Dr. Aris though. But it really is, the whole Clipper experience has now been embedded pre-K through twenty-two. And I will turn it over to Kelpie to give some examples of them.
Yes, I'm the principal at East Falmouth. We have preschool and then I'm degree four. And what I love about this, this is my first year here, is all of these things that we're highlighting all align with the Clipper. So if you look, there's examples about being creative and it's standing grave. So the tenth annual Quills and Quotes, learners esteem fair. But then over here, you also have meet your teacher night where elementary students led for the first time their parents through that. That also hits several things, including learners. And then inquisitive, we have the partnership that had been addressed earlier. And then inquisitive, we have the partnership that had been addressed earlier with Woods Hole and learning and living classrooms. But if you look on the other side, there are other things like the iReady also hits that inquisitive. So the idea being that all of the pieces that we do align with to get to this true Clipper experience. I do love the win at grades one and two, we've had great success with that, which is what I need now. And then they also have the My Path, which is another great individualized learning plan through iReady. And then Bulldog Time and Clipper Time. So one version of something that really stands vertically. So I think that's really an excellent addition here. But again, the idea that everything we do is really aligned. We as leaders embrace the Clipper culture and I think you can see it in the accomplishments we make.
And we are introducing the wonderful Tom Bush. Principal of the Lawrence School.
Yep, my name's Tom Bush, I'm the Principal of Lawrence School. And before going to Focus Area Two, just to reiterate, go off script for a tick, I couldn't agree more about the path to graduation because I have a senior who is graduating, my oldest son, on Saturday and can't say enough of positive things about the overall experience in the town of Falmouth Public Schools. So all the way from East Falmouth through Doc Aris's fall grade. So, but that's not what I'm here to talk about. This is our number two, which is focused on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. So all students, the rationale here, all students throughout their school experience to develop into happy, healthy, successful graduates who appreciate and respect one another's differences and perspectives. We're committed to eliminating disparities and inequity in opportunities and achievement levels based on different cultures. Everyone in the school community should feel safe, welcome and celebrated. And we truly believe that and work at it to everything that we do over the course of all of our daily works here, work here. Some key concepts here are, simply this work is embedded, like I was just saying, embedded in all that we do. Allows us to spotlight our work and call out our intentionality. We recognize it's a journey. Like Jenny was saying, thanks to Jenny for her presentation from the math group. This, through the Equity Audit, we'll continue to engage, engage and continue to grow. And to go into some greater detail and discuss the implementation benchmarks is the lead Osprey, this is Tim Adams.
Tim Adams, Principal of Morse Pond, rated five and six. So these are the implementation benchmarks for our second goal. Starting with creating an environment that teaches and reinforces belonging for all students. So we traditionally offer community meetings for our younger students in the school-based buildings. But then we also introduced this year, the Belonging Series that Henry Spear headed, that was an opportunity for the wider community to come together. We provide opportunities for social emotional learning, sustain access that all students feel psychologically and physically safe. So we continue racial trauma training for our counselors, for our special head staff and programs in each building. We engage the district health and safety committees, having kind of wide, robust discussions in those areas. Creating an environment that advances equitable conditions for all students. And this is where the Equity Audit really came in and will be coming when we start to design the action plan from it. And looking at our own practices from that, that are in each building, our school-based equity teams, which are part of the audit process that are ongoing and looking at structures we have in place in the buildings and areas for improvement and just really rich discussion that happens there, which also will filter into our professional opportunities. So also just to offer some highlights of the next slide. Also, one example of this that came up at Morse Pond from our school-based equity team was the formation of No Place For Hate. An organization that is student-driven, we have two faculty liaisons to the far right down to Lima and to the far left, Kathy Rand. And this was inspired by students wanting to be part of this work, to be part of coming up with ways to be more equitable and how to make the school more inclusive. This particular photo, this is a special meeting they had and they had liaisons from Lawrence and the high school come down and meet with them to hear what the work that the students in the upper grade levels are doing, that they'll get to be part of as they work their way through the grade levels up through senior year. So really, really exciting that this kind of happened organically. And I think it shows the students' willingness and ability to be part of this really important work. They like to take a lot of photos. Highlighting our stone wall in the back of Morse Pond. It's a younger Bushy in the photo as well.
Yeah.
With the fancy pose. So yeah, just some fantastic work going on driven by our kids. So next I'd like to introduce our Director of Equity Inclusion and Belonging, Hannah St. Julian. And we've got to be Eric, Principal at Falmouth Public Schools.
So we just want to share some progress update information with you, starting with the student experience. Highlighting a couple of areas here. One of the areas I'd like to highlight is the work with restorative circles. And that is a method that we're engaging with our students. If they encounter things such as words that hurt, it's a process that we can engage in dialogue and help problem solve and work through those thesis together. So that's some of the student experience that they experienced from pre-K all the way through graduation in 22. Another thing that I wanted to highlight is we've been adding some extra pieces to our cafeteria menus. So as we know, food is a way to share culture and heritage. So we just recently added a few menu options such as the Brazilian-style hot dog, the Cachorro de Kenti, and as well as chicken stir fry. And the student experience and response to that has been really positive. So we're really looking forward to continuing our efforts to diversify our food options for our students. So those are a couple of pieces that our students have directly experienced as part of our progress update. And Henry will take it from there.
So I just like to say that this is a district-wide opportunity. I'm so proud of the kids from Morse Pond, they're doing some fantastic thing. I am very proud, but it's everywhere, it's in the elementary schools and also it's also in Lawrence School. I'm very proud that Lawrence School as well as high school, they went over to different opportunities to become leaders in this work. So the GSA, we have a regional council, GSA Regional Council, they meet five times a year and both the high school and Lawrence students were there to represent, to be leaders there. Also, two times, we sent out other students that are doing the Human Rights Academy. And so again, we're dealing there, not only seeing it, but they're also being leaders. And so we're hoping for more leadership going on there. I personally was involved with that, high school, all ninth graders went over to the Auschwitz exhibit in Boston. Fantastic, it was such an amazing thing. What a powerful image that kids can now process and deal with, what the horrors of hate. And that was an incredible event that we did. And I'm also loving that they're student leaders, especially I'm looking at the high school right now, that led antisemitism talks with students there. So not only experiencing it, but they are leading and doing the work over there. So I'm very proud of the thing. So that, those are the student experience, now we're dealing with the staff experience.
So just as part of our staff's experience and part of our progress update, did want to start by sharing that each of our schools do have our school-based equity teams. And that team is coming together to really look at the experience of every child, obviously wanting to make sure that everyone in the building, staff, students, visitors, feel like it's a place that they belong. And so that group of the equity teams, they come together, they discuss the school experience, the student experiences. They're also a group that come together and work on how to recognize, celebrate monthly recognitions for different areas and experiences within the school. Just for example, something that's coming up is we, in recognition of Juneteenth, the district and all the schools were preparing an educational experience. It may look different in every school, but the common theme is to educate our students about the Juneteenth holiday. And again, it's another opportunity to use food as a way of recognition. So connected to Juneteenth is the recognition of red food. We'll be serving red cake in the schools as part of that connection to the celebration. Red food is the connection to the resilience and sacrifice that African-Americans have pushed through for their freedom. So making again that connection with our students and building our staff along and educating those students. In addition, those equity team members have also become part of our hiring teams because we are also wanting to be intentional and thoughtful about recruiting and making sure that all members, when they are becoming part of the Falmouth Public Schools, feel connected and feel that sense of belonging as well. So that is the staff experience update of our progress.
I need some more.
Oh, you have some more, that's right.
So mine was the audit. The audit really, you know, with Jenny's here, it really gave us an opportunity to examine our schools. How are we doing? Where's the bright spots? Where are the areas of improvement? So we're really going to lean into the work that Mac is doing also. So and it's dealing with curriculum design, it's dealing with professional development, dealing with business office, what their opportunities and the business office has been really great, supporting a lot of the ethics that's going on here. We mentioned a lot about the Belonging Series, but it was really a powerful time where staff and families can come together to say, how can we make every child psychologically safe to learn? Our main goal is to learn, but how can they engage in the learning? And that was a powerful time to talk and I hope that we're going to do more of that situation. So we had guest speakers in the hall. And I'd like to say on a side point, my title is that, but as you can see, everyone's doing that. And I do, I do see Dr. Dour as the chief, I might be the director, but she's the chief DBIB. I can't get the title right. But it's from the top all the way down, and so I'm very proud of this school doing. And so now, I'm going to introduce Mr. Paul Dark, which is our Business Director of the Business Conference.
So our third focus here is the emphasis on two-way communications and partnerships. And essentially, you know, Falmouth Public Schools enjoys the support of the great town. I mean, it's widespread support of the school district for everything that it does. And really, we have a commitment to increase our communication throughout all levels of the organization, especially with students and families and with partnerships in the wider community. And for the very real end, it enhances all of the students' education if we can utilize all the resources within the community. So the next slide, you'll see it's a sense of summary of our efforts. And I'll try to read out like, the type is a little small here, but on the top circle is the time dedicated to outreach. There's an enormous amount of energy spent by the leadership, by the principals, by the staff, by the students and families, by the school committee members, not just here on the school committee night, but also attending all of the various functions that go on through the school year and gathering all of that feedback, that two-way communication. So you know what's an important focus of tonight's discussion on the Equity Audit. Also, to the right of that is the use of third-party professionals that we bring in to enhance our ability to develop that communication and to develop avenues of input for the efforts that we're undertaking. Thirdly, is the professional development. We emphasize the staff, the robust program. Fourth is the instructional materials that we've developed. You heard about the iReady program we have. We've heard of the values development on the Clipper experience that Rose was talking about before, et cetera. And another form of communication is the engagement that we have with the community itself and the town, and the town leaders and the budget formation and forming that around the goals of the school system, as well as the capital plans and developing the resources that we need to invest in the buildings and the infrastructure of the campuses, et cetera. And finally as well, you know, Falmouth has rich resources in our community. So we've mentioned Woods Hole, Oceanographic Institute, National Seashore, Fathom Farming and Farm to Schools efforts that we're undertaking. So all of these, and you know, taking as a whole, as a whole, it's a huge investment in this effort to gather communication, gather feedback from the various schools' students and then create a better learning experience for our children. And with that, Dr. Aris can give some more specific examples.
I'm going to do a quick aside about the Auschwitz trip for our students. So my question one is to emphasize that that was possible because of a very generous donation from the community that provided the buses. And it's one of the many things that makes Falmouth so special, the amount of opportunities that come to our students that people don't get the opportunity to. Also, our English teachers worked really hard to make that an experience that was embedded into their life and curriculum and how it connected, including milk taking and connecting. And then getting a very diverse group of chaperones to be able to be there, from committee members to staff aides, to teachers and parents. And so the story I'll tell you is this, after they had gone to visit it and they came back and about three days later, I took a call from a woman who wanted me to know, she was not from the community, that she and her husband were retired and they had gone to the Auschwitz Museum for the day for the first time. And you could imagine, she said, you can imagine my dismay when we got there and bus after bus after bus pulled up with high school freshmen. And we thought, what have we done? And she said, but I want you to know, from the time we were around them in line to them being in the museum, to them taking notes, she said, you should be extremely proud of the students from Falmouth. And most importantly, you should know, that happens because of teachers, not because of you, sir. I really appreciated both those moments and I completely agree. But it was just one of the many things we were able to do because of our teachers and the community support. I have the piece on implementing the benchmarks around the two-way communication. And I mean, you see the whole say, I'll offer this, one of my mentors, our rainwater, would remind me often that the schools belong with the community and the community is represented by the school committee. And everything that we do is centered around what the community wants. And I really appreciated this summer, Dr. Dour bringing us together on our retreat with Krista Rand and giving us a message that we had growth to do in not only what we communicate, but how we go about that process. And then giving us an opportunity with Krista, look at that. And I think one of the things we did, Dr. Dour is going to cover on the next slide, is kind of re-grounding us in that, in those essential values that we have, right? We are a community committed to excellence and that means every student, every day. And there's a, that ties a tension between excellence and equity and how you do both of those at the same time. We re-centered on that and then worked on not only just some basic elements that we were going to work on getting better at, which included consistency in our Friday communications and those pieces that come out and what you get and how you get it and certainly the community announcements and those pieces, as well as working with us on how we are clear and tight in how we do our celebrations. Everything from how you take a photo of students so you can post that in a way that's clear and concise for people, but as well as hitting those high points. I think the one element I'll share that I think for us was an example of our learning as a collective leadership team, was talking about the process of Plan Do Study Act. And there's a top-down and a bottom-up and we have to listen to the community and listen to the teachers as we refine that. And that really came out for us in working with our staff and on the implementation of the Equity Audit survey for staff. And one of our recognitions from Mac was the idea that was recognition for a high turnout rate related to staff and how that went. That wasn't by accident, it was through this process. Mr. St. Julian had grouped us to have the equity teams. And so part of the reason it ended up being in December was because we started the process from Dr. Dour and Mr. St. Julian in October with our equity teams to get their feedback on how does this work. They gave that feedback loop that said, we would need this so we know that it's valuable and we need an opportunity to know what and why. So when we're going to lay this out, we can be voiced to it. That process went up through our administrative council team, was processed and how the messaging went out, came back to the equity team. So that when it was rolled out with all of our staff, our staff meetings are not all on the same Tuesday. The Morse Pond and the high school have staff meeting on one Tuesday. The following week is staff meeting in elementary. So when we're trying to line everything up with staff, it's a logistical work to get that message consistent and hit that timing. By us being able to do that, our equity teams actually were part of the presentation to say, this is why it's important. And was a result in our. to say, this is why it's important and was a result in our high rate. And I think what we learned from that is not just that outcome, but how did we use that as a benchmark of how we can do things right related to that two-way communication process? And that is what we hope to use kind of going forward in that process. So with that, I'll turn it back to Dr. Dour.
Thank you. So we started this year with this new graphic that Chris Horn helped us through to center us as Dr. Harris talked about on the Clipper experience and the excellence part of the education that we provide for students. But can't provide that excellence if we don't have the every student, every day and that social emotional base, the equity piece. And that we make sure that everyone is included when we think about the education for students. And that comes into also the other two value concepts here are the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging and then the two-way communication and partnerships. And through his work with us, we centered ourselves again on this work. And some of the things that this year for the two-way communication is certainly the coffee hours, the sessions with the staff, opportunities with the students, student advisory, other student groups, again with that two-way listening. And that doesn't mean that everything we hear that we can actually implement, but we do listen and we see how that fits and we, you know, and so it's given great value. And we certainly try to do what we can as we get the feedback. Professional learning and support, and that's all the work that Chris Horn did with us. You saw many of the opportunities or you saw, you recognize that we're doing more social media around our events. We are, you know, creating flyers that is giving out more information to a broader group that may not be able to be here to listen to this presentation. And so we are in many ways doing that. We have updated our website and every time we're creating content, we're making sure that and with Ryan's help, we are creating new webpages that contain that and easy ways to get there. So I'm going to let Sonya kind of finish up here on this slide before we move on.
So I think even in a certain way, Dr. Harris, we're talking about centering. One of the examples also coming off of the equity audit is when Henry and I opened a conversation about this year's, you know, October is next year's, same belonging. We met with members of the equity teams, so BB building-based equity teams. But we invited, it was an open call, to members of the equity teams to come and be part of the that initial planning and we've got another session coming up, working off of their feedback. And then certainly, you know, the various communication strategies and being able to ground those. So the family grading advisory pulling from the professional learning belonging series and the Title I Needs Assessment and then just continuing to layer in and build from there and using the tools and the resources that we've been able to pull from that professional learning. For me, Canva being my favorite, probably on the audio side in my next round for the video. But just really being able to pull that to match the visuals sometimes with what we say and what we write and what's happening together to try and deal with, as Jamie said.
So we've given a lot of information. I hope that one thing that you saw is the consistency across our team and what we've done across the district. And just we're in the continuous learning, really all focused on students. The Clipper experience has really grounded all of us and we've really asked ourselves, where does this sit, right? And we're trying not to add new, but really go deeper in what we're doing. I'm going to share with you the flyer that Dr. Tyler helped put together for us because she really does love Canva. But the works of this flyer is the work of everybody here and getting input from others. And what we created was our Points of Clipper Pride. And we have so many, we could have page after page after page. And what we tried to focus on are things that are unique to Falmouth and things that may not be unique, but we know they're very strong and that we have been concentrating on most recently. So we know that we're going to end up doing a vision of this, I'm sorry, a version of this, it is a vision, but a version of this probably every year as we will see some shifts, some things that may come on, some things that are probably grounded and changed. But just wanted to share. Our next step, which we know doesn't stop with here, but our next step is creating the website that will be linked to this and then explanation. So as this gets into the community and someone might look and say, oh, well, what's the Hope Squad? You know, what are we doing with outdoor learning? What's the Clipper Cafe, right? And so you do that and so that we can go deeper and explain what these things are and what's happening in Falmouth Public Schools. So this was a lot. I will be sending you the presentation deck so that you can reference back. But thank you very much and thank you for the amazing team here.
That was great, thank you. Just before you all, does anyone have any questions or comments for their leadership team?
The BB equity teams who are building-based, so it's each school, so it's comprised of teachers.
There's a team at each school.
Yes, oh, yep, and then they all feed up and there's a district team too.
Okay, cool.
And, you know, not actually a vision test, but if you can find, I believe in this picture, Falmouth is running boats nine and ten from last week's regatta. So we just happened to catch them as they turned into the wind and all boats were in the same direction. So it was just a miracle, I hadn't thought of it. So it's me there nine and ten up to the.
Great.
Thank you.
Where is this presentation available to look at?
I'll be sending it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, considerable for the bright spots and listening to all of this, I think it's really important, certainly I feel and I'm sure many other people here, proud of the leadership, the leadership team, principals, and as Dr. Harris said, the teachers who are responsible, but it's not just the teachers, dietary staff, the people who are custodians, all of them being around the school. They all are welcoming, they're all inviting and they're all supportive. And we want to thank, I want to thank you and I'm sure the other members want to thank you for that. And let that, let those folks know because I'm sure they're not listening to this, please.
I just want to put a, the Clipper expectations, I would like to see that everywhere. I think having expectations for students, not just, I'm sure they're in every classroom and they're scattered throughout the school, but are they at the fields? Are they in the, like, are they out sort of in their Clipper environment? That's not necessarily just in their classroom per se. And I say that because I think that they're great expectations throughout life. Like if you see, like the little friend said to the new friend, if you see somebody that fell down, are you okay? Like, don't just step over someone. But I know that that seems normal and something that you would say to another human being, but I feel like these are kind of crazy times and maybe just a little friendly reminder to be kind isn't, you know, isn't awful. So that's just my thought on that.
Thank you very much. I'm so surprised you're there.
I used to use this. This simplifies it.
Okay, moving on to the first read of the school committee dates of the 24-25 school year. So in your packet is the school committee dates for our calendar for the next year, the year 24-25. This starts July 9th, which is our first meeting in the fiscal new year. And these dates go through June of 2025. You'll notice in the Tuesday, November to be announced and Tuesday, April to be announced, those are town meeting dates. They are always held at Lawrence School before the general town meeting. Kelly?
Eighteenth.
For November, thank you. You have a much better memory than I.
I'd have to look it up, I just knew the date.
You weren't very careful.
No, but I read the minutes.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
November 18th is the town meeting date.
Yes, in November. So again, this is just the first read. We will vote on this the next time. Any questions, comments?
Sharon said that the last meeting in June is June 25th, that's not on here. It was last year's schedule, is that, just want to make sure that's correct.
That is correct. All right, moving on to the first read of the school committee, subcommittees and assignments. I do just want to point out one thing, those of us that have been hanging around here a few years, that there is a student advisory in the subcommittee section. That's actually state mandated and whoever is on that will meet at Falmouth High School every other month during Clipper time to meet with the standing student advisory made up of five or six students. In years past, we've not had as much involvement with students at the high school. However, Mr. Feeny, the amazing Mr. Feeny, has really worked hard to support that and really kind of help grow that program. So that's what that is for me doing in the subcommittee section. You'll also notice that the sections are kind of divided off, subcommittees, other assignments and administrative committees. While you all are thinking about where you want to be placed when we vote on this the next time, in this first section, the official subcommittees, I know sometimes we use that as an umbrella term, but not everything is a subcommittee. Just the true subcommittees need to be posted before they are to meet, just so that we're clear on that. The other assignments do not. So again, this is just a first read on the committee, subcommittees, other assignments. Any questions or comments? Yes, Terry?
So this is not requests for them, it's just approving this document.
This is just the first read. We're just cruising it over. So if you want to make edits and bring them back next time?
No, I don't, I'm just going to rephrase that. We don't put in what we want on this one, we just approve this particular document, right?
You're not choosing a subcommittee today?
You are not choosing a subcommittee today. And when we come back, we will, hopefully, we'll have filled. Like you've sort of been thinking about what you want to do for your subcommittees and your other assignments for the next school year. Margaret?
Yeah, one of the things I think is important, particularly as I know people that have different work schedules and so this is a nice development of what the committees are. But I think it would be important to say when these committees meet in terms of time so that people don't volunteer for something that they can't possibly show up for because they're busy at a job.
Sure.
So that might be helpful to sort of, particularly for people who live here, to let them know when the committees meet so that, I mean, that may be flexible, but like I know, DBI is on Zoom, but I know the technology committee is not, you're going to be there.
Okay.
And so if they're, that would be helpful for the people to sign up.
We can have a column and Sharon can send it out for everyone.
That'd be super helpful, thank you.
It is in the committee descriptions. So in the binder with the descriptions of all the committee assignments and all the other assignments, each one says what they need.
And they are kind of flexible, like if you, you know, on policy, we've kind of adjusted the time. Normally it's on Mondays, not every Monday, sort of Mondays are needed, but, I'm sorry, what's that, policy? But that time has been adjusted based on subcommittee member personal calendars or other expectations in the district kind of thing. So some things are flexible and some things are not. There you go.
I might be missing something, but is calendar not an assignment anymore?
It's really not.
That's fine, I just want to clarify here.
We're kind of, that's great, thanks for pointing that out. We're kind of bound by when school meets federal holidays, acknowledgements and we kind of follow the formula on that.
That makes sense. I just wanted to clarify and I'm fine with it.
Sure. Terry?
Do we need to make a stipulation or maybe, it isn't a stipulation, that each subcommittee only have three members? Because if you want to go and check in, like if I'd like to go to a budget meeting, I can't, there's four members on that committee because there was a quorum.
Ah, yes.
Last year, Budget had four people, I think, so I could never go to a budget meeting.
Okay, that's a great comment.
So can we stipulate that three members?
It's just that we don't have to have three members either. I mean, some committees have one, one member or two members. It doesn't have to be three, but I think what you're saying is no more than three.
No more than three, yeah.
Okay, great, great for that, okay.
How, I'm sure this is in the binder, how frequently do the other assignments and the most of the committees generally meet?
It's on the binder.
Okay.
Yep. And if you haven't received your binder yet, you will. I have not. You will, not to worry.
Yeah, I think particularly for the assignments and the other assignments, those usually end during the afternoon, where the subcommittee slides them different times and I think that would be important to just.
So the, I think, in the morning.
This is for me.
Well, yeah, I remember once they.
That's right, we don't have to get into.
We're in the century, we're, we're not, of course, we're excited.
Sure. Any other questions on the subcommittees and assignments? You'll get your updated binder in July.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to the Act on the Rideshare Policy, which I'm going to turn over to Mary. And the draft is in your packet.
Yep, so the draft rideshare policy is, we discussed last time, there's just been a rise and a concern about students who are minors getting into rideshares by themselves with an unauthorized adult. We can't prohibit parents from sending students to school in a rideshare, but we can abide by our practice of not releasing a student to a stranger who's not an authorized third party. So that basically is just codified in this. I neglected to mention, this should appear, there's riders and walkers and there's bus transportation, the letters, I'm just talking about the letter of the policy. It's in the E section, I've written it down, I didn't bring it with me, but it does, it will have a particular letter.
All right.
In a logical place in the policy.
Sure. Is there a motion to act on a rideshare?
Oh, me, sorry. Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Great, that passed, thank you all. Moving on to the superintendent update, Dr. Jen.
Thank you.
So I just want to kind of give an update on our teacher, you know, our budget and the staffing that we've had and so, you know, and teacher class sizes. So as you know, we are still at within our recommended class sizes in many cases under, you know, for all grades up through six, seven to 12, we don't track because they change classes. But, you know, so what happens, you know, during the budget season, I mean, we definitely have a staffing side of the budget.
side of the budget and it needs X amount of staff members, right? And so we have, you know, between resignations and retirements, we have opportunities to relook at where the needs are. And so, yes, we make sure that our class sizes are low, we're within the budget. But sometimes, you know, twenty in, in one school or one grade level, you know, a class may work well. And in others, because of the certain needs of students, we might need seventeen in a class, right? It just, it just helps as we address the needs of students. And so such a situation just occurred as we are looking at our kindergarten numbers coming in. They are, they are still lower than, than the other years. We're still hoping for kids. We hope they come in. But as we're looking at, you know, each school, for instance, at the T Ticket School, it looks like we will only have two sections of kindergarten students, still being at fifteen kids per section. So not because we are, we have more students and they're going to have a higher number of class size, but because it's the number of students that are registering at this time. And even if a few more students register, you know, we'll still be well within that, within that limit. What that allowed us to do is to move that teaching unit to their fourth grade class where they were only going to have two sections, but the needs are greater in that, that class. So now we're able to address those needs. We can't do that automatically, right? And this is just something that, that happens ongoing as we look at weather shifts. How, where do we, yes, it's by numbers, but also where are our needs? So we're able to stay within our, our budget, but we can shift from time to time on that. So, you know, again, I just have to say, through the budget process that we have done over the last couple of years, you know, everyone's experiencing the fiscal cliff. We had to be very conscious about the decisions that we're making. We are in better shape than most districts for sure. We have not had to make teacher cuts. So we have been able to absorb what we need to through resignations and retirements. And so, and as we're doing that again, trying to make the shifts, you know, last year I had to put two additional staff members at East to address the shifts. This year at Morse Pond, they didn't actually go down. They actually kept their, their same level staffing because of the needs. Where in the beginning, I think during the budget season, I was sharing that, that we would have to go down in every school. But their needs are high and we were able to shift enough that we were able to do that. So I just want, it's an ongoing process, but we always, with the principals, how we are always looking at the needs of students and being able to do that. I do want to remind everyone that we are running a staffing budget at eighty-four percent of our budget. It is always good practice to run eighty, eighty-two. And eighty-four, what we're trying to do is put as much staff out into our buildings as possible. We are still okay on the non-staffing side, but we, if it will be tight, we will have to watch on that side. But I have complete confidence with Paul Dark managing our budget that we will get everything. But I just want you to know that staffing is our priority in this district. And keeping our class sizes low, but also addressing the needs of the students as we go along. A little interesting tip, information here about sports. Molly, I already shared the one that I had down, which was great. It was, good to see their sailing team. It's actually the champions of our, the Cape and Islands League. So congratulations to our sailing team. It was a lot of fun to watch them. And so that was good. A new record in track. Silas Gartner broke the record by seven seconds in the two mile at the state divisionals. The, the previous record has been held since nineteen eighty-seven.
Wow.
I know, so. That would get a little bit too, didn't it? But anyway, I was very excited. Just wanted to share that. And he's just a sophomore, so good things to come. The girls' boys tennis, the girls' boys lacrosse, and the girls' softball, all qualified for the state tournament this year. So we're waiting and excited to see what's going to happen with that. The back track little, Teagan Lynn scored her thousandth point this winter. She became the eleventh player at all time at a high school to be able to do that. So that was quite a record. The girls' hockey team holds the school record for twenty-one, I mean, sorry, twenty-three wins in a season. So that is the school record. And then our girls' hockey coaches, Frera, Rob, and Devlin were all voted, globe all scolastic. So congratulations to our students and, and our coaches. Just some updates, music performances. We're, I know we're winding down school. We still have some music performances on May 29th this week, six thirty at Morse Pond. June 3rd at six o'clock at Mullin Hall, the fourth grade band. June 5th at six thirty, Lawrence Spring Concert. June 10th at both, six o'clock, both at T Ticket and East Fowl, is there a band? Performance and, and or band course. And June 12th at six thirty, the Morse Pond Strings and Course. Remember, the strings is new. This is just our second year. It's, it's very exciting that we have strings. And our community continues to donate. They're very excited that we're starting strings at that event. So that's very exciting. We have one art show left on June 12th. It's the third trimester at Lawrence at five o'clock. So just, just as we wind down school, there's all these, you know, really fun events and I just want to put that out. Case anybody can attend anything. That's great. I'm going to turn it over to Henry right now to give an update on the Juneteenth plans because that is coming up right around the corner as well. And then he was able to take a trip with our students to Martin's Vineyard, about the Heritage Trail. Would you talk a little bit about both of those things, please?
Both of those. Excellent. So, uh, Juneteenth is a new holiday that, you know, we're in our third year on it. And at the time, a lot of people don't know what's going on because it was down in the south. And they made it to a federal holiday to commemorate the ending of slavery. I think it's an important day to all remember. And when we first started off, I remember the first year, it was not, you know, it wasn't the curriculum. It was, we're just trying to get, get things going on. And so we were very performative in that first year. Two years, we took some steps. In the third year, I love to say that we are implementing more embedded kind of action that's going on here. If you, every, we, talking with Mr. Feeny, looking at a lot of the, a lot of the curriculum, it is all embedded in each curriculum from, I think from Morse Pond all the way up to the high school. In elementary, they're doing a lot of different things. Everyone has a flag, a jingle flag to show up and to, to show kids, you know, as a learning tool to show the kids what it's all about. You heard about the, the meal that they're doing. So even the food service get involved in there. June 10th, if you want a nice bread cake, you can get that. You know what it's all about. Anyway. So that's, that's going on here. And I just love that it's becoming part of our, of our culture. And that's been, you know, a different learning experience. We've had the poster, poster contest, which has been fantastic. We're actually looking at some literature, some poetry that might be involved in that kind of stuff. And students in Lawrence School are learning to the song, "Let Their Voices," which is the anthem. And so if you, I'd like to invite everyone here on the 15th of June, it's not Juneteenth, which is the 19th, but the 15th, we're having a collaboration with schools and, and community members to celebrate Juneteenth at the Art Alive Festival. It's, it's always been in front of the, the library. We'll have students performing and being recognized. And their art, artwork will be presented. And so please join that and continuing. For me, Juneteenth is not only recognizing past, it's reflecting on where we are right now with, you know, our race relationship. And then a call to action. I want the kids to say, what are you going to do? And I love that the kids have been doing that. Like what's our call to action? What do we need to do to make this a beloved place for all the communities? That's Juneteenth. Martin's Vineyard was phenomenal. There's so many great things going on in school. I'm just amazed by all the things going on. Christina was, has been doing this for a couple of years. She's got, she's got a free transportation with the Island Queen. I don't know how she gets her access. It was awesome. They, they brought seventy kids to, on the ferry to go on the Martin's Vineyard African American Trail. I went along and I was sitting down by myself. Not that I'm a bad chaperone, but I was sitting by myself. And a woman came up to me and she goes, she sat down next to me. She goes, are you alone? And I go, no, I have seventy. And then she goes, she goes around and she's all the kids. She's like, oh, okay, all right. And this is, we had a conversation. And what was, what was sad is that she didn't know there was, she's headed towards Martin's Vineyard. She didn't know that there's an African American Trail. It's rich. It's, it's a great, rich history in Martin's Vineyard. And I was sad that I said, you know, it's there. Our kids are involved. But let me tell you, our kids did such a great job. And it was a hot day and they went through it. They had like a, it was, they did a scouting hunt and the teachers really prepared for these kids. Before they even went, they had a learning lesson plan. They, they, they knew some of the stuff they had to look for. And then, and then the, what Christina was really, was really cool to say is that the kids got a slight separation, degree of separation from like historical figures. Martin Luther King summered at the Overton House and, and the kids were able to say, oh, that's where he was. And that was powerful. That is, you can talk about this, but you say, it's happened here. And there were people saying, yeah, I knew their, you know, their, their kids and stuff like that. It was such a powerful thing. Another thing, I'm sorry, I said, another thing that was incredible is the Heritage Trail has a community member that does the Heritage Trail. The school system, they partner up. So whenever they do something, they partner up. I get down there and I, I didn't think about anything. And the, the board of Heritage Trail was there and they saw, they saw me and they introduced me to the superintendent of Martin's Vineyard. And they, we started talking. We started, we're understanding why they're doing this. I totally loved their, their partnership. And I said, we, we'd like to do something. We would like to partner up with you. So I want to be heading back there in June 21st. By the way, even though they're head of us on the Heritage Trail, we're head of them on the Equity Trail. Because they do the same equity that we're doing. So they're like, oh, let's talk about that. So we're, we're really partnering up and that's been a fantastic, and I, I like to thank the, the teachers at Lawrence for making a fantastic thing. If you haven't been there, let's go on 21st. I'll come with you. To the Heritage Trail. So that's my two. I know I have another one, but that's my two.
Thank you. So the next, I did email the school committee about our partnership, just as we remembered everyone about our partnership with our sister school in Cape Verde. I know you, Henry's given us lots of updates through the year. But just to continue and to talk about this next step with Bridgewater State University and the Cape Cod, Cape Verde Museum and Cultural Center partnership, I'm going to turn it over to Henry and Sonya. I don't know who's going to start.
You go.
Sonya, about that next step and the opportunity for some of our staff members to, to go on this trip.
Just making sure you're really. So we're excited to be able to continue planning, as our mentor said, with Bridgewater and with the Cape Cod, Cape Verde Museum and Cultural Center and Professor Zita Viera, who had come over to see us about this time last year. It was a little earlier than this. And so we've had a tea. She visited all of our schools. There's opportunities for our, our teachers and our students at the time to connect with her students there. And in our elementary schools, they continue those connections. Largely in first and second grade, they're helping students at the ELLCV, so the English Language Learner School of Cabo Verde, practice their English. They're exchanging cultural stories. They're talking about histories of their country, different landmark events. And so when we're looking at the opportunity to visit the sister school, one of the connections is looking at the elementary educators whose classes have been connected and talking all year. Combination of physical pen pal events where they're sending off letters and pictures and then zooming. I guess it's type, I stopped, I guess.
I know, I guess so.
We keep saying that for some reason when we talk about the sister school. So staying communication and building experiences. So there's an opportunity to make a curricular connection at the elementary level, but then also looking at growing and extending it. And one of the things that we'd like to be able to do if, I mean, it goes forward in plan, is through these drifters. So similar to the mini boat and drifter experience that we've been doing here where we've been releasing them to Cape Cod Bay and we tend to be able to reach out to them because they get caught in the loop. They're tracking the, the tidal direction and the migration patterns of the sea turtles before they get close to them and kind of follow them floating. We'd be able to do that, releasing them from Cabo Verde. And then in many cases, because of the climate, they actually make it all the way across the Atlantic. So being able to see likely in South America, but seeing where they are and being able to output them in GPS so that the students at the ELLCV sister school, the students here in Fowl can track the data together and have that as a conversation form. So we're going to use it in elementary classrooms, but then also bring that data into the work that we're doing at Lawrence and the high school for our current drifter and mini boat project.
So I like, I love that you're talking about this because whatever we do, we have to have education excellence as, as the core. And so whenever we're talking to teachers or they're talking to Western Kipper or whatever, we are looking at educational opportunities from both sides. We want a mutual connection between the two. So I mean, and I love that we're, we're doing partners. I mean, we learn things by partnership. And so having that be a partner, I would never go to another country unless I know there. We have some rich partners over there. And that's the same thing, not rich, but, but like. There, there are engaging partners from Cape Verde and then they'll, and then we have on here. So that partnership is a very fantastic situation. And that's always been the case. And I, I think I've said to you in the past that I've been doing this in other communities and to see how kids grow and see, not only as, as high school and, or second grade, but college. People tell me, coming back and said, oh my goodness, that experience has been the experience that changed and life-changing. So our goal is that we will have teachers going down, down Cape Verde, which is awesome. Because it's one thing to say, teach, oh, let me tell you about Cape Verde. Another thing to say, oh, when I was at Cape Verde, and we shared a picture of, you know, the excitement of the building. And I think that's powerful. So not only we would like to have that, teachers going there next year, but our future goal is for high school kids, maybe eighty above. And I'll tell you this, my son went with me when I took kids down there. And that's been a moment of his life, is just saying, remember when we, and then, and, and seeing those changes. So I think it's going to be life-changing and I, I hope that can be our goal. Not only to have this rich interaction between teachers, between students, but then going back and forth there. That, that'll be fantastic.
And, and I think one of the other requests we want to be able to fulfill in traveling with teachers is they've specifically asked us to help them build professional development.
Oh, yeah.
The university is still young, officially sanctioned in 2007. The country is still young. They will celebrate its 50th year of independence as a country next year. So they're building out their educational infrastructure. They've asked us to be part of the journey in building out some professional development for their teachers, bringing practices and experiences to them. And then also they want to be able to connect us because we're going in partnership with Bridgewater State, with the universidad, universidad de Cabo Verde. I don't know if I said that. I put a spin check on it. But being able to partner, have an opportunity to explore. The president of the university is here in the fall. We had an opportunity to spend a Saturday morning with him and the members of the museum and cultural center. So being able to go there and visit and then also bring them professional resources by his gift because they brought some books that we were able to use and access to help us understand Cabo Verde. We'd like to bring them some materials to help understand that or education at large.
There.
Laurie kind of mumbled something about school committee members.
She did. She did.
Did I let the kid out of there? You know. Margaret and I were already arguing about it. Margaret says, well, I'm Portuguese. So.
Well, we need Portuguese.
But she speaks Portuguese.
It's going to be.
Oh, Wendy just.
She's kind of rusty, but, but, but.
It's going to be still competition.
It certainly is. That's why I laughed at, at her committee and, and liked her on this trip. So yes, we'll, we'll work out details. If you really are interested, let me know and we'll, we're going to try to work out some details.
And I think a long-term relationship. I, I think there'll be.
There's going to be multiple opportunities, especially if.
I'm getting all the.
But we are really hoping, and it is a goal, that if we can, next year, work that it could be our students next spring, the guys from high school. So, you know, so there's going to be multiple opportunities. We just can't take more.
Chris?
Um, I just out of curiosity, after hearing kind of the drifter program you were talking about, have you looked into partnering with any of the Woods Hole research? have you looked into partnering with any of the Woods Hole research institutions on that? Where they might be able to use the data or maybe the scientists might want to get involved and help.
I'll just say pretty, you're going to answer this more, but I know that before this project, the museum, the Cape, Cape, Cape Verde Museum has partners with Woods Hole. And they have a whole exhibit and showing that. And we, we want to make sure that that continues. So, that's been a hallmark of their relationship. But we can answer the drifter.
Through our partnership, that's actually how we originally got connected, with a couple of our partners that are Woods Hole. And they helped, there were some mini boat in part, or whole, mostly in part. They were donated to us, but we were then able to bring the case to the process of updating and outfitting. And they also connected us to Educational Passages at Maine, who's helped us with all like the GPS outfitting and the weather sensors. So we have a place to rub the data and we have a place for the maintenance of the fleet, if you will. But we want, in this particular case, really start with some smaller scale drifters because we're not sure that we can recover them. But, I mean, we're super excited about the data. We want to look long-term, like something that might be sustainable. If you have to, they have to purchase some drifters and send them. So, yeah, we're, we're looking through that and I could connect you with the context if you want to know a little bit more detail. I'm pointing because Carmela's got it like right on her chest, so I can check.
So, Nancy might be combining someone from Woods Hole, don't we? So, because we just keep, we keep, you know, expanding the opportunity. So maybe, I mean, that's a good idea. Maybe we should talk to, and maybe help us while we're there to figure out. Chris, check, check. There you go, check, check. Anyway, so it's a great opportunity. So, thank you. Just real quick, this is our capital budget season. Paul is working diligently, we'll have to go, but maybe a little shift, which happens every year. On the capital budget, June 25th, we'll present the first read. And Jod, have you voted on that? So we're, we're right on schedule with that. But just wanted to know, we are working on that. So, exciting news, this just came into 201 today. I actually put in for a, a proposed session at the Masque Mass Session of the Fall. And we were accepted. So, our title is Green Today, Blue Tomorrow. One District's Effort to Reimagine Learning: Is There a Solution to Sustainability? Okay, that's a big, not cool, but anyway, we were trying to get it on and we were accepted. I'm very excited. And usually, a school committee member presents with us. And so, again, another opportunity. Let me know if you're interested.
Massachusetts.
So, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents hold a joint conference in the fall. It's in Hyannis. Lucky for us, we're right here. It's a three-day, two-and-a-half-day conference. And so, we have, we have, we have all that.
That's so lucky, we don't get to stay over that day.
But we have presented before. And, and just so you know to the new members, we received a national award. It was a Green River Award for our efforts in sustainability. And so, this was fitting. We actually put this in. I submitted this before we actually won the, the, so it's all kind of nice that this is coming together. And that our local state recognized as well. So, so we'll, there'll be, a number of us will be putting it together, you know, starting over this summer and getting ready. So if anyone is interested, we would love to have a school committee presenting to the conference. And we should, certainly we could have more than one, but it would be nice if we could at least get one person to present us. So that's great. So that was very exciting, it came in today. And then, just, you know, I cannot believe this year has gone so fast. I cannot believe graduation is on Saturday. And then, the last day of school, which is a half-day, is on June 18th this year. So a little earlier this year than we had the last couple. And then, I just want to end with showing the banner. I know earlier in the year, I talked about putting in a Thomas Road Race Grant. These banners are to go downtown. So on the actual poles, we will have the home of the Clippers. So there's one for every lamppost. And then, the founder, as generous as they are, also said, do you want new banners around the high school? And I was like, oh, yes, please. And so, they were like, let's just do it. And so, they also are, you know, funding all of the banners around. So, we're getting new banners around the high school, but this will be downtown. I've worked with Peter McCarthy and he has said two or three times during the year, he'll be able to put them up. Yes, there's some other banners he's got to trade out, but he's thinking that we'll be able to get them up. So I'm very excited. Andrew Plor, a high school student, actually designed the banner for us. And so, I, it's always special, every, and here, thank you. And up there's Andrew. And it was his design. And I'm very excited to always, whatever we do, we get our students involved. And so, anyway, it's here and they, but this just arrived today as well. So, today was a great day all the way around. So, thank you. Are you going to end now? Thank you. Any additional questions or comments for the super good night?
I just made one comment about the Morse Pond Strings.
Yes.
Last year was the first year.
Yes.
And I might be wrong with this, but I believe Peter Harbriggs and his wife donated. And they, they announced it at the concert, but I don't know if we ever noticed that publicly. So I just wanted to thank Peter and his wife, who I know has watched her on.
Your final graduation?
Mm-hmm.
What are the expectations for us to see? The same as in other years?
Same as in other years. You can ask Shari for your invitation and parking pass.
I forgot them, yeah.
And then there'll be the regular seating.
Okay, fine. All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I will turn the reorganization over to Superintendent. Okay, so, yes, once a year, after the elections, we reorganize. And it is my role to ask for nominations of the chair and take the vote. And then, once we do that, I will turn over, back over the meeting to the new chair. Or new assistant chair, or whatever. So, we're going to start with the nominations. So nominations for chair.
I will nominate Melissa Keith.
Okay, Melissa Keith.
Thank you. Can I second it? Thank you, Sue.
Okay. The nominations?
I'd like to throw my own name in as chair. I've been vice chair for a few years now. I'd like to be chair in a year that is hopefully very calm. Because I've served as chair before, but it was during COVID, which was definitely not calm. And, and a year that we were trying to hire a superintendent. So, I'll throw my name in as well.
Two nominations. Any other nominations?
I need a second.
No, you don't need a second. No, it is nominations, nominations, we have to know. So, any other, sorry. Seeing no other nominations, I'm going to close nominations. This will be a roll call vote.
You need to open it up for discussion first, I believe.
Do you want to have?
Not to, I don't think on the double chair, because it's not, it's not yet.
But, but you might want people to.
They can, as we go around.
No, I mean, the people who are nominating, should they speak?
Would you like to speak?
I don't, so, no.
Okay.
I, I would like to continue my work. And this year, this past year was my first year as chair. And I would like to learn, put into practice what I want and do better on the parts that you can understand from.
Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote. And so, Melissa, I'm just going to go around the room the way we're sitting. I'm going to start with you.
Oh, lie.
These are easy.
I know what you have to say.
Also, lie.
All right, so, Susan?
Melissa.
Terry.
Kelly.
All right, I'm going to abstain. Is that okay? Is that okay? Do I have to? Okay.
Yeah, it's hard because I'm going to, maybe for the new nervous, what are reasons to abstain?
Well, you really abstain when you haven't participated in a conversation about a topic. But this is a random topic, so I haven't been discussing it.
Uh, Kelly then.
Okay.
Melissa.
Melissa. All right.
Kelly.
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 Kelly, Kelly. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations, Kelly.
I want to thank Melissa and Kelly. Especially through some of the episodes this past year.
Kelly, should I have a beer?
Uh, okay. So I'll open nominations for vice chair. Are there nominations for vice?
For the nominee, Terry.
All right, Terry. Any other nominations for vice chair?
I would like to run for vice chair.
And Margaret. Any other nominations? Okay, anyone want to make a comment? Terry.
Okay, I've never been chair in all the years I've been on it. And you hear me year after year tell people, you should all try something new. So, that, that's one thing. But the other thing is that one of the responsibilities of the vice chair is retreating goals and things like that. And a few years ago, I took a workshop at the Masque Conference in Hyannis. And it was about setting your mission statement and your goals. And you work together and you write it up and you print it out and you put it in a binder and you put it on a shelf. And then, you never look at it. And that's kind of what we did, didn't do, which is a mistake. So, I would like to have the opportunity to work on that and bring it up every few months to people to make sure that we're staying on our track, so we don't do what they said at that conference not to do. But anyway, that's just my input. And I'd like to openly thank you.
Well, because the questions were two of each of us here, it made me do a lot of thinking about skill sets. And thinking about the different people in the committee, the different skill sets. And then maybe think about my own skill sets. And so, I think I'm fairly aware of, or trying to develop a thought of what are my skill sets. But the other reason I would like to run for chair, particularly with Kelly, is Kelly.
You mean vice chair?
Huh?
You mean vice chair?
A vice chair.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, here's what I want to work, is this part. I just think she has some incredible knowledge about the school committee, about her experience on the school committee. And she has been so very helpful to me through my time on the committee that I just feel it would be a learning experience to me and I would be a better member in the school committee. And that's why I'm interested in her.
All right, thank you. So we'll, we'll call vote again and we'll keep with the left, I guess. Soon, I think, starting with you, Terry.
Um, Margaret.
Terry.
Um, Margaret.
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 Terry. Oh, boy, it's a time until me. I hate breaking, I hate breaking times. Terry, I expect how long you've been doing this since you've been chair. Terry, congratulations.
Thank you.
And last is the position of secretary. Any nominations for secretary? Terry.
I'd like to, we nominate Margaret.
Any nominations for secretary?
Can I nominate Melissa, please? Thank you.
You accept?
Sure.
Would you like to, any other nominations? Would you guys like to say anything?
I was secretary for a number of years after Terry went into the chair position. And I enjoyed it. I think I did a good job. There was a time I was responding for the school committee on the emails. That was also a challenging year. So, I would happily take secretary.
I did this last year. And as you have said, when you do something in the year, it's a learning experience. I would be glad to continue. So to the floor.
All right, thank you. We'll pull votes too.
Melissa.
Terry.
Margaret.
Good thing, Melissa.
Melissa?
Uh, Melissa.
Margaret.
Vote for herself.
I'll vote for myself. And Melissa has it, five to four. Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Next up is routine business, the minutes. Approving the minutes from the meeting on May 14th. Thanks, Mike. Is there a second? Okay, thanks, Melissa. Any edits or corrections? Great, all in favor of approving the minutes from the 14th of May?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Any objections? Great, you done. Thanks so much. Next page, committee reports. Committee report, of course, Terry.
Yeah.
Always. What you got?
The memorial garden service was wonderful. It always is. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Ritchie, who did a great job with Repertory Singers. And the kids reading, they picked out their own readings. It was very moving. It was a great ceremony. So I just wanted to say thanks to the students for pulling it up like they do. Or as they do, is that the right grammar? Sonya.
Any other committee member reports?
I have two negotiations we'll meet next week.
Wait, no, next week.
This week?
Yes, we, oh, God.
You may as killing me.
Uh, this week. And the only other thing I want to mention is a huge thank you to the town for approving the ballot and their questions. You can actually get a roof on North Alman. So just a thank you for that. And that's it. Any requests for information? Motion to adjourn? No, thank you, thank you. Me. All in favor? Thank you.